I'd like to call this meeting to order and at this time, if we would, please stand for the indication and pledge of the flag.
Thank you, Lord in heaven, for this beautiful day. Thank you for the little rain we got. Thank all the people here today, Lord. Be with all of the first responders, all of our men and women that's in the military. Take care of our country before we can have a free meeting like we have here today. Lord, just be with all of us and make sure we make the best decisions we can today, Lord, in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, limited and justiceful.
Okay, do we have any deletions here on the agenda staff? The same one addition.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, sir. We have one addition. That would be an update on the legislative session, and one deletion, and then I would like to pull item number 10, the staffing for adequate fire and emergency response.
David, that's the cipher grant you're wanting to pull?
Yes, sir.
Why?
Um, we have not had a discussion yet of the staffing levels coming up in the budget, so it's premature.
When is the deadline for five for this?
It was in the packet. I don't remember. But it's an annual grant that comes up every year.
I would, I would like to leave it on for discussion only. I've got some discussion about it. I would like to, I'd like to get some questions next time, if that's okay.
So, Mr. Chair, the motion would be either to approve the agenda as presented or approve the agenda as amended. I think your motion rocked us to approve the agenda as presented.
Well, except the addition. There is the addition.
The addition with Stas, correct?
Yeah.
Yes, with the addition with Stas. Second. Got a motion, got a second. Any other questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Okay. Uh, Mr. O'Hand, Hearn, I'm sorry.
Hey, Link.
Linkin. Screens are dead.
Good morning.
Joe, if you would, just state your name for the clerk.
I'm Joey O'Neal. Good morning, commissioners. Thank you for the opportunity to talk about Economic Development Week, which was had out a little over a month ago at this point.
Nothing matters. Screens are dead.
Economic Development Week is done in partnership with the...
But it's all of them all the way down the road.
Just, go ahead, Joe. Get it right. Came in, Burke. It came in, Burke. I'll chief.
I apologize. We just had a technical glitch we're trying to fix. You're good to go. It's just the board can't see what's on the screen because our screens on the table are dead. So the board may want to turn around and look at what's up on the big screen. If you've got anything to present on the big screen. So again, I apologize for the technical glitch. We're working on it as we speak.
So Economic Development Week was made since the ninth. Economic Development Week is done in partnership with Columbia County Economic Development, this paper, this year. Economic Development Week, all business week, rather than first week, all elements, we can wind up, obviously, we can find those sources. Really, just that we should shine a light on something. People ask why Economic Development Week, and I always want to say this. The goal of Economic Development Week is to highlight the importance of economic development and building strong, vibrant communities. It's a time to showcase local initiatives, partnerships, investments that drive growth, great jobs, and growth quality along. Through events and engagement, the week fosters a connection between public and private sectors, emphasizing collaboration as the foundation, as a framework. Ultimately, we want to showcase Columbia County as the premier place to live. So as I said, it was a week-long celebration. This year, IFS Extension Office, as well as the EDC Office jumped on board with us. One day, we had a guest that was also taken by us. That was a great night showcasing the different departments. Tuesday was all about tourism. Glenn did a fantastic talk on the impact of tourism, the economic impact it has, on the heritage from the IFS office. They were fantastic walking through, about here, Link. Wednesday was all about business, community partnerships, and really showcased how those work hand-in-hand. Thursday, we were there, the big game, was the ribbon cutting, the race, the street, the baseball store. And last week, Friday, Shelley Phelps, who was the, um, um, and the fantastic thought on the benefits of working as a private partnership to revamp and revitalize. Just a few things. Obviously, the point of Economic Development Week is to get the economy together. Jennifer will probably echo this as well when she speaks. We got a lot of feedback from around the state, throughout the region. Why are you guys in Economic Development Week? I had colleagues, or if you can handle it, reached out and saying, we're seeing things about Columbia County on the news. What's happening? Which is a great thing to hear. You know that the times and the networks are not going to waste. Just a few testimonials I'll read quickly. Carol Saviac, he was the external affairs manager for North Florida, Florida Power and Light. He said, this week highlighted the positive partnerships between local government, businesses, and nonprofit organizations, showcased the wide array of economic development activities. Jeff Henry, who we do know, the executive director of NIDP, said, this week was a tremendous week for the business, great balance of education and information, coupled with the fantastic opportunities that now we can connect with new community and private sector leaders. Being Rickman, who is the economic development director for Columbia County, his office, said, this week clearly shows that Columbia County is growing in a positive way. Collaboration, business community, he's taken orders, so much confidence. Just real quick, lastly, we obviously measured growth by numbers. We also know that our efforts in our partnership with the county. A few weeks ago, we pulled these numbers. Overall, 103 businesses from around the region participated, 213 business professionals, ranging from people, professionals from Tallahassee, Cal, Austin, Jacksonville, Orlando. We have over 40,000 social media impressions, and that have reached over 20,000. Coverage is also fantastic. Austin, there's great coverage in the next year quarter. TB20 now reaches the stars, thousand Cal, getting into the panhandle. They covered every single day that they got. They got us back numbers that were also astounding, and not hospital, it's all Columbia County. That's got it in a nutshell. I believe you all have a presentation which we'll be able to tell.
Thank you all.
I'm just gonna piggyback off of that, commissioners, with some shiny stuff this morning. So, this is a little difficult to put up here. I'll put it up here. So in this same kind of partnership, working along with the Chamber, with tourist development, with IFS and Extension Office, so right after that, we went into the annual Florida Economic Development Conference, which is the entity that is kind of the liaison for all EDOs across the state, whether they be private, public, whatever. Everybody across the state that does what I do, this entity that's our informational arm, they're our liaisons to Commerce, they're, they're kind of our advocate in a lot of things. So it takes our rural region and grows it to the entire state. So I say that to say this, we started, I wanted to include this, this particular picture for a reason. December 2023 was right after the Rural Summit earlier that year, and I was kind of asked to, hey, we're gonna have a focus group, and if no one's asking questions, will you stand up and ask one? So it was one of those moments where I kind of got put on the spot, but I asked Secretary Kelly at that time, you know, hey, your team needs to make a tour, needs to make a trip around the rural communities in Florida and see what we have going on. There's been a lot of growth, a lot of development, a lot of improvements. Come see for yourself, get boots on the ground. A month or so later, we get a call that, hey, we're coming to visit your site. So this picture that you're looking at is early in December of 2023. Secretary Kelly at the time, along with Assistant Secretary Laura DiBella. Next to David is a gentleman named Matt Swanson, who is, at the time, was the CFO or COO of Commerce. He's now moved into Select Florida as president, but I bring that up for a couple of reasons. So they came, made tours of all of the rural communities, saw the development growth that was happening, and, you know, it was a big, big announcement for Commerce as they did that. So that leads into a couple of years later, Matt Swanson, now president of Select Florida, presented us with a Rural Deal of the Year at the conference for the Agro-Liquid Project. So Agro-Liquid brings so much value to this community, being that it's our first project at the industrial park, and it's related or it's grounded in agriculture, right? This is a company that supports the farmers. Their, their, their mission, their statement literally is to prosper the farmer. So it was hand in hand with us being a rural community, and it was a very, very touching speech that Matt gave, being that newly hired at Commerce, we were the first site he got to visit, and had the honor of presenting us with this award for Agro-Liquid. So that's the triangley-shaped award you see. And then the other award that we were presented with, which I give you guys so much appreciation and recognition for this, is innovation of public-private partnerships. Things like the industrial park don't happen in a silo. They don't happen with one person. They don't happen with one entity. The partnership with the state of Florida, the grants that Governor Scott first initiated with the Florida Jobs Growth Grant, the wastewater plant, and the rail, the additional funding that had gone into some of the planning, the conveyance of land from the landowner, warehouse, so that we could build that plant and that rail. And this board being supportive of the growth and development out there for what it means to this region is the reason why we were recognized in the state of Florida for, and this was all projects. This was not just rural communities. The innovation of public-private partnerships really was a state's way of saying, we appreciate the investment that the county, the landowner, the state, everybody has in this project, and we support it 100%. So just wanted to take a couple of minutes today to thank you guys for the support that you give economic development in general. It's a, it's a marathon, not a sprint, something that takes many years to develop, and your support is invaluable in that. So just wanted to share that with you today.
Thank you, Jennifer.
Thank you.
Congratulations on that award to you guys. It's very well deserved.
Thank you.
You should leave those up there.
Yeah, leave them up there.
Leave them up there. We might want to look at them.
And I did send a PowerPoint for mine as well, but I'm sure it didn't go through with crazies, and I sent Link a link to it just now, but it probably delayed. But wanted to come before you guys just to share some of the seven awards that the Extension Office received at our Extension Professional Associations of Florida meeting about two weeks ago. And our office does a lot of work of coming together, using the resources that you guys are able to provide us with, and we work really hard to try to get recognized across the state. Well, this year, we were recognized not only across the state, but we've received some regional and national ones. So just to go through them real quick, you guys received the copies of the PowerPoints and of the actual memo that I shared with you, but I'll share with, for everyone else as well. We have the Environmental Education Team Award, which was for our work with Bellamy Beaver, basically. So you guys have seen him pop up at all the Economic Development Week things, and he's our way of being able to add some fun to water quality and education. So that award was given to myself, Haley Corbett, Paulette Tomlinson, Erin Harlow, Zoe Whitlock, Kaylee Piclo, Julia Fulton, and our Columbia County Master Gardener Volunteers. And with that one, I believe that was one of the ones that we were receiving a, maybe I didn't include it. Oh goodness, I think that's one of our regional awards that we placed second regionally with the National Association of Extension, sorry, National Extension Association of Family and Consumer Sciences. So what these associations are, they're all representatives of all of our programmatic areas that allow us to do what we do and help us with other things throughout the state. And then another one we received was the Extension Disaster Education Award, which was a team award between myself and Haley Corbett, and that's from the ability that you all gave me to be Public Information Officer and naming Haley as the volunteer coordinator whenever it came to foods and meals during the past two hurricanes of Milton and Helene. So without your support on those, we couldn't have received those. Other awards included a marketing package, which was also on some of the hurricane disaster, which we did all the social media support for the county, and then Extension Housing Outreach Award, which Haley received with the state Extension Housing Team, because she does do some teaching with HUD and first-time home buyers here in the community. And then we received the Family Health and Wellness Team Award, which was for some mental health support teaching, a Program Excellence through Research Award that I was a part of a team that received, and then the same team received also the Excellence in Teamwork Award. And then one of mine that I received on my own was the Visionary Leadership Award, which was something given through our Honorary Extension Association. That was something that I've done a lot of work as, not only Public Information Officer for the county, but mostly as County Extension Director. And if you've been around this county for a hot minute, our office has grown tremendously, and we've done a lot to really become a cohesive team and to become much more a part of the county and not just be that branch that is, oh, we, we have UF in the county, but we are your county employees. So that's something that we've been working really hard at. So thank y'all for the time to be able to come before you and, and present those and share those with you.
Thank you, yes.
Thank y'all.
Did you want to recognize your staff?
I do. Thank you, because I made them all show up today. So with us today, they're gonna be, why did I even go? Haley Corbett, we have, if you want to come to the front, yep, and Zoe Whitlock, and Julia Fulton, and they hate being in front of everybody, or not everybody does, but yeah. And we have Kaylee Piclo with us, they were able to make it. So yes, just would like to give titles real quick so you guys can lay your eyes on and know who your employees are. We have Haley Corbett, who's our Family Consumer Science Agent, and she teaches all things that have anything to do with anything in the home and the community and finances and food safety, and she's taught us food preservation, wellness, all that stuff. We have Kaylee Piclo, who is one of our secretary specialists. We have Zoe Whitlock, who is our 4H Program Assistant, and we have Julia Fulton, who is another one of our secretary specialists. Can I what? Absolutely. You want us to turn around for the camera for everybody, though? So David, can you get a picture? Yes, please. Can I hear camera?
I won't need you, Patrick. Just stay right there, okay? Okay, at this time, I seek a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So move second.
Got a motion and second, so further discussion. All in favor say aye.
Move to adopt.
Got a motion to adopt.
Second.
Got the second. All in favor say aye.
Mr. Chair, now would be a good time for the legislative update?
Just had to get the mechanic off from under my desk.
Oh, we got, we got, we got Sig P.
Good morning, everybody.
Morning, Stas.
All right, so I was in Tallahassee yesterday. It doesn't seem as bad as it's perceived as of right now. So I'll go over the, last Friday, the legislature late night said that they have a agreement or that, to the parameters and framework of the budget, and then they started conferencing earlier this week. So in terms of our projects, right now, we were grayed out. That means we have, unless it's vetoed, 1.15 million for the Swanee Valley Tower. And there's a high chance the Ellisville Water Project will be funded under the Utility Authority. It's what they did, they kind of combined a bunch of water funds into one $400 million fund that would cover member projects, and our project for the authority was a member project. So that would have been 1.9 if funded fully for Ellisville. The TDC thing, issue seems to be non-materialized right now. We don't know if that's, it's looking like it won't be what it's been perceived to be. I actually got to talk to Representative Mooney from Key West yesterday, and he, he said that he didn't think it was going to be what, what has been, been shown as. He thinks that there might be some, you know, more regulation on the TDCs, there might be some caps or revenue caps on the TDCs, but it wouldn't be as what we, what we have seen it thus far. Terms of other budget items, RIF, the Rural Infrastructure Fund is not funded as of right now, which is unusual. The Jobs Growth Grant is only funded at 25 million right now, but those are subjects to change. I don't have a final number on scrap, SCOP, and SIGP, and then the property taxes, the House Committee that was created on property taxes are gonna continue to do their work through the summer, and if anything materializes, it will be next session rather than this session. They're just trying to get the budget done, any items that they want on the budget for this upcoming fiscal year done, and then they're gonna call it and then come back in the fall to, we'll see what else they come up with next session. So that, that's the update as of right now. So it's not as, my doom and gloom tour hasn't, it, it will stop for a while, hopefully. Any questions?
Stas, at this time, we don't have no job growth grant in, do we?
I don't believe we do. Do we have any outstanding?
I think we've completed the ones we had outstanding.
So that's, that's currently funded at 25, but it could change during this budgeting process. But they should be able to get a budget done next week.
Okay. So when do, when do you think they'll have the complete budget out?
By, by sometime next week.
By next week?
I believe they'll come back and vote on it on the 16th, so it would have to be done by the 13th, no later than that.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
Just as a reminder, remember, once the budget's done, it still has to go before the governor, and he has the option to veto.
So that, that's the update as of right now.
And to my dollars, on the RIF grant, we've only asked for one more, correct? The one on 4775 at this time.
Mr. Chair, the directions that staff was given was we had two potential RIF grants to apply for, the one being the one on 4775, and the other one being train three at Ellisville.
The one on Ellisville.
Train three, sewer train three?
Gotcha. Okay. Say that again. I couldn't understand what you're saying there.
I'm sorry. Let me speak into the mic. The direction the board gave us previously is there's two potential RIF applications we've been talking about, one being at 4775 with Cornerstone Crossing, and the other one being in Ellisville for the $3 to $6 million train number three on the sewer plant?
You got that? Okay, Stas. Anybody have any more questions for Stas? Thank you a lot.
Yep.
All right, Mr. Forman?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chair. I have two items for the board's consideration and action this morning. The first is approval of a bank of settlement agreements on the Cypress Lake Road Project. Chad Williams and I had an opportunity to meet with seven property owners and their attorney, Mark Natirboff. We did that over the course of about three days, did video conference meetings. We were able to reach settlement. I will tell you, as, as big as this number is, the number originally demanded was significantly higher. Each of the property owners engaged the services of professional engineer, rendered a full engineering report, engaged an Arbrist, who rendered Arbrist's report for all seven properties, and also had appraisals for all seven properties. We use those figures, we negotiated, and the numbers that we arrived at are reflected in the settlement agreements and the spreadsheet that's been attached to your agenda. It is my recommendation for approval. I know it can be a hard pill to swallow when you see the size of some of these numbers, but as we've discussed several times, eminent domain is always, always, always costly to the, to the government. It's just the way it is, and when it goes this far in litigation, which it's really up to the landowner how far it goes. I'm happy with the settlements. I feel comfortable with the settlements. I think you are being good stewards of the taxpayers' money to settle at this juncture versus letting this go forward. The further it goes, the more it will cost. So this will leave one parcel remaining. We did have a status conference with the judge towards the end of last week. The last parcel is up on Charles Terrace, and they're represented by a different attorney, and I'm trying to get that one negotiated out and settled. I feel good that it will be, but it'll be the last parcel in the entire project. I also want to let y'all know that you've not, you don't have this much money budgeted for acquisitions this year. The attorney for the other side knows that, the judge in the case knows that. We're gonna work it out. We still have to go through a consent final judgment and things like that, so the timing might work itself out anyway. But we do need to anticipate budgeting just a small amount of money for next fiscal year to cover the balance of this, which will be about $40,000, and then a little bit of money set aside for the last parcel owner up on the corner of Charles. So it's, 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 everybody looks at it and says, this is bad news, this is good news. This means we're getting this project behind us, and we're finally getting hard numbers, and we'll be able to say that we're settled.
Jennifer, if I may?
Yes, sir.
I have looked at this too, and, and, and really, I'm just blown away by these figures. But, you know, at the end of the day, it goes back to what I was talking about last week. I would like to see a breakdown of exactly what we have in engineering, property acquisition and all on this project versus what the cost would have been to just go in there and pave a road. Because I believe we're, I, I might be completely off, I don't know, I hadn't seen the numbers, but I think we might need to look at a different route of how we do this in the future. but I think we might need to look at a different route of how we do this in the future. Because this, this, this just, it's not working, I'll put it that way, it's not working. And if we're going to continue to turn any dirt roads into paved roads in the future, we've got to find a different avenue of doing this.
Yes, sir.
I don't know what that is exactly right now, but it might be the dusty road permit and just going there and paving on the right of way we have.
Yes, sir. And, and, you know, we have talked, I think DOT has updated their programming. This is older DOT programming, but I understanding is the way they've updated their programming is we'll need to have this acquisition done before we even start a project like this again, which is a good thing, we've talked about that before. The issue that you run into with eminent domain is, you know, it's, it's the way the law got set up to kind of, you know, protect the property owner. And everybody understands that, if we're a private property owner, we want the government to have to respect our rights. It creates a lot of hurdles for us. And so I, I think the commissioner's got a really good point. If, and we did sort of re-engineer this project a couple of times, you'll remember, to try to avoid too much acquisition. I think the more attractive projects to the county going forward, particularly when we're going to be funding it, and we will, we will fund this acquisition, is going to be able to identify low acquisition projects. I, I think that's going to be the objective. Mr. Kirby and I have also talked about the approach of working with the commissioner in that district. We tried to do it on this project, Rocky, you'll remember. And, and go to the landowners and say, if we can get this worked out, we'd like to do this project. But if we can't, we probably won't be able to.
Well.
And we just have to do that.
Everybody knows I'm working on Mayo Road right now, but I can tell you, we're not going down this route on Mayo Road. That road will remain a dirt road if this is the route we're going to take.
Yes, sir.
Or we'll do it, we'll do it a different way.
Yes, sir.
Because I'm not going to subject the county, and, and I would just add, this project was started before I was elected. This was, this was approved, I, I kind of inherited this project.
Yes, sir.
Oh, but we can't, we can't continue down that road, this road here, as far as, if the property owners won't work with us on turning the dirt road into paved, then they will just be on a dirt road. I mean, I, or either we're going to have to find a different route to do this. Because this, this unacceptable. I mean, to, to continue down this path, we can't do anything about this one, but we can in the future.
Correct.
So. I, I just don't understand, if they're going to pave my road, I'm going to give, you know, it's going to make your property worth more money. It's amazing to me that it gets fault so often. You know, 80% of people, 85, 90% of people, they feel that way, but then you've got the few. And I'm, and I'm facing that on Mayo Road right now, I think there's 14 of them right now. Mayo Road, yes, by gosh, ain't, not going to settle, you know? Oh, that's, that's the last I've heard, you know, 14, but, um, I told someone the other day, look, if they don't, if they don't agree to, to the right of way, we're done, you know, just.
Mr. Ford, if I remember, on Mayo Road, haven't you been using your local paving money to purchase this property?
I don't know, I guess that's a question for Mr. Kirby. Because I know in the past, we've always, the county, out of the general funds, always paid for right of way acquisitions. But, uh, you know, uh, that's, that was, that was what I've been told.
Mr. Chair, that is correct. We're using the local paving money, that part of the property.
Out of, out of, Mr. Ford?
Yes, sir.
And, and I agree with Rocky 100% because, you know, six weeks after I came into this office, eight and a half years ago, I, I got hit by a very, very close friend on, you know, you're going to pay me this. Well, you paid X amount of thousands of dollars for a oak tree on, on the Bishop Road. No, that, I wouldn't hear that, but it doesn't matter. But when you see that breakdown of what these trees cost and this, this broken down, you, you're going to buy the broken fence, and then you're going to buy the new fence to replace the broken fence.
Well, I don't know if you've paid attention to this, but they had arbers go out and look at trees, not even on the right of way, that we're having to pay the arbers, and we're having to pay the property owner for damage that might occur to their tree at some point.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
For clarification purposes, DOT has cleaned this problem up. As Joe indicated, they will simply not accept a project for consideration if the acquisition of property is not complete, et cetera, et cetera, design permitting. On DOT funded projects, they require you to acquire, in their opinion, a necessary right of way. So the option would be on a dirt to paved conversion, if you, as we're going to talk about Imagine Way, that's a dusty road permit, it's completely county funded, DOT has nothing to do with that. We can do whatever we want and follow what we call the green book. On your scrap, which is mainly just resurfacing, but on your scop and your Sig P programs, which are DOT programs, if you're going to submit for those programs, you are going to do their process. What Joel was trying to tell you a while ago, the eminent domain is going to go backwards on us in a good way. Simply put, you'll get all that out of the way, as Commissioner Ford indicated on Mayo Road. Obviously, that's a very expensive project. So the plan with Mayo, it connects from Pine Mount to US 90. So part of the Sig P program is alleviation of, of traffic off the state highway system. My opinion, that's an excellent candidate for the Sig P program. But prior to submission to FDOT for that road, you will follow their rules. So if you get away from their rules, that would have to be county funded.
And Kevin, when you go follow DOT specifications, there's a minimum standard? Is there a minimum standard as far as design of right of way and whole nine, you know, the whole 120 or whatever it is?
Yes, sir, and it continues to grow. It went from 60 foot, 80 foot, also sometimes 100 foot. And the purpose of that is, is the speed, et cetera, sir. The speed of the road indicates your, what they call a clear zone. They don't want a tree around the side of the road. The challenge we have, and as indicated in before, I've paved a lot of roads. You, you can pave a road however you want it, and they design the green book for smaller counties, which is a little less rigid, if you may, okay? Where your engineers of the world get all scared, for lack of a better word, is when the trees right beside the edge of the pavement, you know, when they put that stamp on there, they're saying, I agree with this. That, that's your challenge. Can it be done? Sure, but not under DOT monies.
I understand.
So that is your biggest challenges, as Joel indicated. Moving forward, these projects will be less prevalent with this eminent domain theory, because as Commissioner Ford indicated on Mayo Road, you've got a few people held out. So we are in a total position, even though you've spent a lot of money on design and engineering and permitting, you are in position to say, if you don't want to play ball, we shelve the plans until you do want to play ball.
And Chairman, if I may, the, the problem is, you don't know what property you need for right of way until the engineering is completed. So there's a catch 22. You can't go to the property owner first and say, I, I don't want to spend $400,000 on engineering if I'm, if you're not going to give me your property. Because you don't know what property you need. So, you know, that's what I'm saying, this process is, is not working.
That's right.
I'll put it, oh, and, and I don't know what the answer is to paving roads in the future, but I do know this is not the answer.
Well, Mr. Ford, you know, and that may be something we need to collectively as a board lobby to Tallahassee in the future, and get our lobbies to work with also. Because of the simple fact of what you just said, you know, you don't know what to ask for going into it. So, you know, that is a lot of money, $300,000, $400,000 upfront, that's basically money thrown away. The only one person that wins is the engineer. But you got to have their professional, I mean, you got to have their knowledge to be able to move forward on that. But this may be something that we might need to look to as a lot, you know, because our, our hands are tied, and, you know, and if, if the project seems to be good enough for DOT to even consider in the future, I feel like there ought to be funds available, maybe a 50-50 split on the engineering or something. Yeah, I'm just using fact, you know, just scenarios here. But the, you know, that, that's a, that's a, that's a big nut of money, you know, to have to come up with, just throw out the back door.
I, I mean, be honest with you, if that's the route we got to go, we're through paving roads in Columbia County. Oh, we're going to a grave road from now on. We're through paving roads, I can tell you. We can't afford to pave a road.
You told me about paving dirt roads, yeah.
Turn a dirt to, to, to pave.
Paving converting, it's, and you know.
That's, it's, this is not, I'd say, you just can't afford to do it.
And what's sad is it's the people that live on those roads that are, that, not most of them, like you said, 80 or 90%, they're good to go. Like I would be, I'd want the paved road, but you got people that think five foot land's worth 100,000, and it's, it is what it is.
Well.
Their land, it's their land.
Well, not only that, you got people that will tell you flat out, I bought property on dirt roads because I wanted to live on a dirt road.
And Commissioner, that was the majority of the folks that, and, and again, no disparagement on these people, they're good people that just wanted to be fully compensated. That was their number one complaint. They're like, we had this beautiful oak lined road that we could ride horses up and down, and y'all took that from us. There's not a lot we can respond to that, and if we go to a jury with that issue, the damages are determined by a jury. You could have faced a much larger, stiffer number than this.
When you talk about the horse thing, I got some horse places, and I didn't realize that is such a big deal. They don't want paved roads, they want to ride their horses on dirt roads.
It was a very big deal.
That is a huge deal in the horse community.
But you know, it's not a, it's not a bad conversation to have to the fact of we still sitting on $80 million of asphalt roads that need to be repaved today. So.
Yes, sir.
It, it may be time to put that baby to rest for, you know, a century.
Yes, sir.
Okay, if, uh, no more discussion here, Joe?
Yes, sir, I just need a motion to approve this.
I make a motion, we approve.
Got a motion?
Aye.
Got a second? No further discussion, all in favor say aye. Aye, all opposed.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The next issue's a little easier, the old Columbia City Volunteer Fire Department location. This is one that hasn't been used since the 80s. It's out in Columbia City, it's been vacant for a long, long time. This is not the newer location, the, the larger building. The, Mr. Bonner, who had originally donated that property to the Columbia City Volunteer Fire Department, passed away recently. And his family discovered that there was a reverter in that deed, and they've simply asked to trigger the reverter. I see no reason not to. I did talk to the chief and the assistant chief, they say there's no plans to use this property for fire protection in Columbia City, and that is the trigger on the reverter, if we're not going to use it. So I'm just asking for a motion to authorize issuance of a county deed in favor of Mr. Bonner's estate to revert this property back down.
It lies in my district, most people in Columbia County don't even realize there was a fire station there at one time. It's adjacent to the sink, which, if, if you want to do something, I don't think you could do nothing. So I personally make a motion to, got a motion. And a second, any other discussion, all in favor say aye. All opposed. Thank you, Joe.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Good morning. Um, I have four quite straightforward items here this morning, Mr. Chairman. The first one is your annual concrete contract. This is where we perform the maintenance on over a amount of in sections inside vaults, et cetera. We received one bid for $231,125. So I'm requesting a motion to award bid number 2025, aye, to creative concrete design for a total amount of $231,125.
So moved. Second.
Got a motion, got a second, no further discussion, all in favor say aye. Aye, all opposed.
Okay, thank you. The next is out at the old jail, the jail cooler and freezer replacement. We received two bids, low bid, plus to commercial equipment repairs. So I'm requesting a motion to award bid number 2025, H, to commercial equipment repairs for a total amount of $147.025, and to approve the agreement.
So moved.
Got a motion, got a second, all in favor say aye. Aye, all opposed. Kevin, if I may, on this, on that there board, the question was asked by me, when we build a new kitchen out there to accommodate the needs of the facility, this equipment can be relocated to the new kitchen.
That is correct. Okay. The next is back at Old Jail again. Got a replacement air condition. We received, uh, anyway, pre-air condition, we need a budget amendment for $36,000 approved. I'm asking to approve budget amendment 2543 for jail AC replacement in the amount of $36,000.
So moved.
Got a motion, got a second, no further discussion, all in favor say aye. Aye, all opposed.
Okay. A final item, as indicated earlier, we're doing some paving around the county right now. In Mr. Murphy's district, we're doing some resurfacing. And there was a little short section of dirt road right there across from Ryan Zekr's office off State Route 47 called Imagine Way. Basically, we finally got the property acquired so we could apply for the dusty road permit. The way that works is to avoid all the things y'all were talking about earlier, retention bonds and all the master design. We finally got all that worked out. So the contractor's agreed to extend his unit prices to capture the paving of that little short road. And public works, based on the board's decision here this morning, will go and actually perform the work next week. So I'm requesting a motion to approve constructing an asphalt roadway along the existing right of way for Imagine Way, utilizing the existing contractor's price.
So moved. Second.
I, I have a question on that for we, I, I mean, I'm, I'm good with it. I just want to know the process we're using here for future reference. So, so basically, we're going to do a dusty road permit here, right?
Right.
So we're, we're eliminating any engineering, and the county's going to do the lime rock work?
Yes, sir. So as we talked about it, all again, this is 100% county funded, we have total control over it. So in this process, we have to own the right of way to apply for the dusty road permit. So we reached out to Swanee River, what does dusty road permit mean? Basically, you're not altering the center line, okay? You're following existing center line. So in this case, we will bill our local paving monies, the public works side of things, labor and material, go out, I think it totals $36,000 inclusive of the contract, it's a little short road. The contractor will extend his unit prices, my guys will go out, make, create stabilized subgrade, put rock down, they'll finish the rock, contractor comes in and pays.
Now, would that be billed to that commissioner's paving money?
Yes, yes, sir.
100%.
Yeah. Oh, so Kevin, that's 35, or did 35,000. How, how long is that road? I'm just trying to put a number of what it would cost us per mile to do this.
Right. So I don't have the number on it.
About from here to the front window there, right?
Yeah, it's a short.
Yeah, I know, it's a, it's a short road.
I, I think I can answer your question where you're trying to go with it.
Yeah.
Simply put, if you don't get in the eminent domain situations, the acquisition of right of way, for example, we're going to spend a million dollars on right of way acquisition on Mayo Road. If everybody agrees. In the grand scheme of things, that's not a big budget impact, in the grand scheme of things. Now, when you get into the eminent domain, changes all the things in the world. Easiest example I can give is Rob Olive Road, okay? Way back in the day, Commissioner Weaver's here. We went down and did it as a dusty road permit. Joel, you can back me up on this right here. The challenge you're going to run into, Imagine Way is flat as a pancake, easy to do. When you start doing these dirt to paved conversions in this modern world, if you do not do engineering and all the fancy stuff, every time, you're going to get into a drainage problem. Okay? Old Wire Road, for example. If we did not have it engineered and all this, we've got two or three residents that live in a bottom, and we have had to defend that a dozen times. If you don't have a lot of studying and engineering done on these dirt to paved conversions, you're going to be subject to some problems. Every small county goes through this. It, it's, it is a challenge. Imagine Ways of the World are really easy. The little, uh, Mr. Phillips over there, Price Creek Loop, over there, those are easy, right? Where it gets complicated is the attorneys of the world will go out there and say, well, the DOT requires you to put in retention bonds and all this drainage and things of that nature. Obviously, it's needed, or they would not require it. Mr. Parnell, we're going through a little situation, where I just paved a little road for you. We did not change the toe, what we call blue top elevation whatsoever. Of course, we're behind it now, we're past it now. But in mo- modern times, everybody's got a penny, right? So that, that will be your challenge going forward, if you opt to get away from acquisition of property and the retention bonds, not, not on a little project like this, or not like Price Creek Loop. But if you start doing bigger projects like Mayo Road without following the DOT process, I will advise this board, you will be subject to legal, legal discussions.
Yeah, I mean, you talk about welling. I, is some of that just because a paved road sheds more water, or sheds it quicker? Or what, what's the deal?
Everything about, so obviously, the purbiest versus impurbiest, right?
So you got all the purbiest.
Yep, it's a rattle. And you know, at the end of the day, guys, if you can imagine, Commissioner Murphy indicated a typical section, right? So if you've got a 22 to 24 foot paved section, in theory, if you put a 6:1 on the front slope, you got a two and a half foot ditch below the center line, a 4:1 on the back slope, geometrics of it, that requires a minimum 60 foot to do that, okay? It just does. If you just think about typical, right?
You have the drop on the road.
You've got the road here, that is 60 foot, that's where that math comes about. It's 60 foot to make the geometry work, right? So as we're getting fancy here, what are you going to call this? All of a sudden, they say, well, let's get 80 foot, because people are going to be dropping 60 miles an hour. So then you run into, if you don't do the width, let's reduce the speed limit. Then everybody fussing about the speed limit, so as, as somebody indicated earlier, it's a no wind situation.
Speed limits don't mean anything anyhow, anymore. Anymore.
So I've learned that.
But we can, I, I actually have the breakdown for Cypress Slade. I have that. I have exactly the construction versus, uh, attorneys, imminent domain, engineering, but simply put, you can always figure it's roughly fifteen percent to get a set of plans of the gross cost of a job. You can write that down every time, okay? It's fifteen, depending upon complexity, it might be eighteen percent, but fifteen percent is our number. We always go into it with our eyes wide open. The engineering has to be done, as somebody indicated earlier, before you will establish the properties you need. That is the catch twenty-two, right? So my opinion and experienced opinion says, Imagine Ways of the World, Price Creek Loops of the World, those are simple. You're not, you're not changing anything. In today's modern world, if you don't straighten out curves and things of that nature, you're, you're, you're going to get the bad, right? And that's where it's always hard to go to do a dirt to pave conversion without spending that gigantic amount of money. Because simply put, you go from dirt to pave, folks go drive faster. So when they miss the curve, they go off in the bushes, right? They're going to come back, as Joel indicated, with their engineering teams. They're going to say, that job was not designed properly.
Well, but I mean, i- i- we run into that on Junction Road anyway. That wasn't an engineer design job, you know what I'm saying? It was always an engineer.
You know, we ran into it on Baskin Norris going up that hill.
Sure.
The mayor's got to be there. Now that right there, that's a mental thing.
Sure.
Some people can deal with some, again, it's the weirdest thing I've ever heard. I tell people that story all the time. They say, we just put some signs up. Put signs up and they draw up some man drive off the road.
Let's give them something else to hit.
Remember when you told me that? It's a psychological thing that makes people run into a guard rating.
We can't drive everybody's car for them. I mean, I, I, some people got to take responsibility for themselves, but yeah. Uh, I know Junction Road, we got a house that's been hit three times with a car.
Sure.
Crazy.
Now, what we installed post. Um, but now for the record, guys, I wish we'd pave every dirt road we have, right? But as very, as you indicated, Mr. Murphy, you, you, you don't need to ever pave another dirt road again a day in your life. And in my lifetime, we'll never get caught up on a resurfacing.
And, and, and that's the thing, we, we, we're doing it. We do it because Rocky's got so many dirt roads. And I, I feel for him on that. And but if you think about it, we really can't take care to pave roads we got. So we're adding inventory to roads we can't, you know what I'm saying? It, it, it's.
And contrary to most belief, once you do a dirt to pave conversion, you would think the maintenance cost goes down. It's opposite. Goes way up. Right? You got to mow it then. You got spider insects. You got your paint. You got your RPMs. It, it's an evolving problem that everybody deals with.
Everybody in the country.
Yeah.
And just for the board's, uh, knowledge that this Imagine Way, uh, however it was halfway in between here and that window, the county owned that app. And then this here was left in the state and, uh, we was able to put a deal together. Uh, all with my, uh, District Five's not my money.
No, this is, I, I agree. This is the way to do it if you're going to do it.
Well, I can see is the don't, you know, the trash trucks just tearing that brand new asphalt up, backing up and, you know, so that's why we went down this road. And I appreciate everybody's effort. Joel, he was very integral in this, uh, putting the deal together with the, uh, property owner. It was, uh, for a change, government worked pretty quick on this one.
Kevin, I want to ask something because you, you're pretty old and you've been paving for a good while. Thirty-five, forty years ago, or thirty years ago anyhow, and you're, well, you paved when you were eighteen, nineteen, you know, thirty-five years ago.
He don't remember.
He can't remember. We talked to him too much. But thirty-five or forty years, were people, when they wanted to pave a dirt road, were they just easier about it? Look, yeah, pave it. I mean, was that kind of the, well, we could ask Dale Williams out. He was here back in eighteen sixty, but.
Well, it had to be.
It had to be. Yeah, because roads are paved.
We have paved several roads in the past and we cannot pave a road now, I can tell you. We paid, we, we haven't repaved a dirt road since, oh, Cypress Slade, as far as I know.
I don't know how.
And that was, that was approved a year or two before I was even elected seven, seven years ago.
Former commissioner of District One.
There you go. Now I was about to say.
Run Road stops about four, five hundred yards short of where it was supposed to stop. He commented to me that he's never had to buy a piece of right away in District One. I said, that's changed. And we got ready to go out there to do the dirt to pave conversion. We bumped into an old boy, decided he needed about two million dollars for strip land. We stopped the highway. And I told him at that time, those days are awful. The days of folks donating property to do a dirt to pave conversion. Modern times, you're exactly right.
That's why I was wondering how Ron did all that all those years. Two hundred miles, right?
It's over.
Okay. How much of that was done with Scraper, Scott or Signy?
About big part.
In District One back then? The county paid for all that?
Yes, sir.
And I'm sure Dale had something to do with that too, you know, back then.
Of course, the county paid for, paid for all of it and most of it was on Dusty Road.
That was under.
That was before even industrial purpose or fire. You just, back then we measured up.
Yeah, that was under.
Maybe we need to hire Dale as our liaison to the people.
There you go.
Hold on.
Mr. Chair, I do, I am requesting a motion for approval.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any other questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed.
Thank y'all.
It's about a dollar now. They, they, they want a ton of money for that little strip land now. That's what it's about now.
Thank you for having us here this afternoon. Um, first thing on the agenda is county fee increases for the Department of Health. And of course, Department of Health is here to represent themselves. If you have any questions, I don't think the microphones are working, but that's okay. I'll speak very loudly. Basically, they have not had, had one fee increase as long as anybody can remember. And these fees have not been increased. So what these fees are, these are fees they charge clients that come in and request services. If they don't request these fees and they stay at the same fee, they're ultimately going to come back to the board and ask for more subsidy. So we can go through them. I've got all the fees listed. If anybody has a specific question on any of the fees in your packet. And at this point, I turn it over to you. So you can make your sales statement.
Good morning. Um, so like David said, we have been established since, uh, nineteen ninety-six and we've only had, um, proposal for increase in twenty eighteen. So you imagine the cost of things change, uh, since nineteen ninety-six and we've never had an increase. So for example, the, uh, postage fee, the one that's up there, we were only charging a dollar. Well, I'm proposing that be at the actual cost that, uh, it costs us to mail, uh, birth and death certificates to individuals. So we're just trying to break even, not trying to make money, but we are losing money if we charge only a dollar. So that's one of the things. Um, on another page was about, uh, school physicals. We only charged twenty.
The other way?
Yeah. There it is. Um, so we currently only charge, uh, twenty dollars for a school and sports physical. Well, we're proposing to go up to thirty-five. We, I had my team, uh, research to see what comparing counties charge. And Swanee was charging thirty-five, Alatra thirty-five, Citrus thirty-five, and locally with other competitors in the community, they charge fifty. So going from twenty to thirty-five, I still think it's, um, reasonable for the community, but makes it more sustainable for us. Um, the other section is, um, our environmental public health program. As you know, the onsite stuff, uh, program is going to DEP, which means that we have to do a workforce reduction. And with that, uh, we have less staff. So less staff means more money, what it costs us for them to actually take the time to go out to community to do different things. For example, the facility, um, inspections and permitting. And so we did also again, research and a lot of neighboring counties, Madison, Jefferson, Sumter, for example, charges twenty-five dollars in addition to a state fee. So we have never charged a local fee for a lot of those, uh, things listed. We've only charged what the state requires us to charge and that goes back up to the state. So we don't see any of it. So what we're proposing is that we get twenty-five dollars charged on top of what the requires for the state fee. And so that twenty-five dollars could stay here locally to continue funding the environmental public health program. And that's basically it. Any questions?
These aren't drastic fees. These are just to the new standard.
We know.
I mean, uh,
this answers a lot of questions that, that, that tells me a lot about all fees in all counties. And I, I can compare this to a bunch of things that have been happening in the county, but, but it, it, it's, it's like I was telling somebody today, you know, that we have fees for the pool. It's ten dollars to go swimming at the county, counties, not the county, but the school board pool. There's, there's a fee to, to, to get, um, uh, to, to get a, what do you call it? The ones you, one you don't have, the community center. If you want to rent a community center, there's a fee. Well, those fees aren't to hurt the taxpayer. They're like, there might not be anybody, there might be eighty percent of the taxpayers may not use this, this health department. Now, it shouldn't be on them to pay these fees because the people using it should pay the fees, just like anything, the pool, the, 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 anything you use in the county, the boat ramp, you know, the boat ramps, Gilchrist and Levy County, they, they charge boat ramp fees. You know, but that keeps the people that are using it and tearing it up paying the fee, you know, and not every other taxpayer. So if we have to subsidize, I mean, it, this makes sense to me, you know? I, I hate, hate any fees at all. At least we can do everything free, but just everything costs money now. But I saw.
Yeah. And again, these aren't drastic increases. I mean, it's, this is bare minimal. And I really just come back up to a standard of where it should be anyways with our surrounding counties. So, um, we, we need a motion to approve.
And we are usually lower or even with all the other counties along, and usually we're lower than any other county around us for every fee we charge. So I, I, I like that.
And, and these fees you, uh, service, how many counties are just, this is just Columbia County.
Just for Columbia.
And I'm sure you're having to go to the same thing in Hamilton and everywhere else you work.
So, so basically each county has to approve the fees.
Correct. Yes, sir.
Yeah.
Me personally, I think they're very reasonable. Yes, sir.
Yes.
No, I was, we're ready for a motion.
Yep.
So I'll make a motion, we approve these, uh, fee increases for the Department of Health. Is there a number on it?
The BA twenty-five, forty.
So I make a motion, we approve BA twenty, twenty-five dash two. Is that what it was?
No, 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 no.
Okay, all right. My bad.
Increase for the health department.
Okay. Got a motion?
Second.
Got a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
So next we have BA twenty-five, forty-two. Basically, this opioid money is crazy. We never participated in the lawsuit and they said, well, here's opioid money anyway. Well, now we're getting to the point where the Attorney General's Office is saying, we still have opioid money settlement that we're going to give you. They've already written the check and we've gotten the money. So this BA takes the money that they've already given us, appropriates it into the fire department so they can incorporate it into the opioid program that they're doing with the paramedicine. Was not something we anticipated or knew we were getting.
So how will it be used?
Uh, it'll expand the paramedicine program.
And how much longer will this program run?
Uh, there's opioid money for about seventeen years.
Gotcha.
I think it's seventeen years, isn't it? Yep, seventeen.
And it's fully funded. That money is funding this.
Right. The paramedicine right now is fully funded by the opioid monies.
I make a motion, we approve BA twenty-five dash forty-two.
Second.
Got a motion, a second. No further discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed.
The next item is the Hazard Mitigation Grant application. We talked to you about it, uh, last week. We tabled it. Uh, we have talked about Bible Camp Road and, uh, pretty much come to the decision that, um, there may be a way to work with the property owner on getting easements and right of ways and all that's being handled. So this grant application is due July twenty-fifth. I hate to see it go to waste and not benefit residents of Columbia County. We feel that if you give this authority, it then allows the city of Lake City, Swanee Valley Electric and Clay Electric to spend money in Columbia County that will benefit them. City of Lake City has representatives here. I think maybe the electric company does. The electric companies do. So if you have questions on their projects, they're here to answer them. You have two electric companies plan to take overhead wires and put them underground. City of Lake City would like to rehab and redo Gwen Lake. We all know that Gwen Lake is an issue. Uh, to reduce flooding and mitigate damages. And so we're asking you to approve letting these agencies utilize the money instead of us. They will do their own applications. They will provide their own matches. Um, but we have to allow them to use the money.
Okay, and they are all aware there's twenty-five percent match, correct?
They are.
Okay.
Yep. And they're all prepared to meet the match.
Okay. All right, uh, any questions? Pretty good.
So this is, this is just turning over this money to somebody else that they can use it, right?
That's correct.
Some of it, right?
Well, we've already committed ten percent to Elevate Florida. So that's taken off the top. So if you, part of this was they've lowered the amount of money they're giving us. So instead of giving us fifteen million, they're giving us ten million. Off the top comes Elevate Florida. So the remaining nine million dollars or so would be dispersed, would be allowed for these three to apply for it. Again, they have to apply for it. Their projects have to be eligible. It's not something that's automatic, but they're all prepared to do that.
I make a motion to approve the HMPG FEMA forty-eight, twenty-eight DR FL.
Got a motion?
Second.
Got a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed.
So I did not make a slide for number ten, so I was asking to have it withdrawn from the agenda, which is the application for the twenty twenty-four Safer Grant. Uh, the reason I did that is I felt it was premature. We haven't gotten into budget process yet and talked about staffing levels and all that sort of stuff. Safer is a grant that pays for hiring more firefighters. It's a three-year grant, twenty-five percent match. So they'll pay seventy-five percent year one, seventy-five percent year two, then year three, I think it's like sixty percent. It was in the agenda packet where it talks about that. Then year four, you've got to pay for them. They're your baby rocket. Um, it really is tied to a bigger issue that at some point we're going to need to talk about, and that is what can we do as a county to improve our medical response? Uh, we are looking at, and I've been working with both Jeff and Lance, trying to figure out what can we do to on scene time, reduce on scene time. If we can reduce on scene time so that EMS isn't spending all their time providing the medical care, they can show up in the ambulance, load it, go to the thing and they're available more often. But that requires firefighters to get there first and start applying medical care before the ambulance gets there. The other thing that we're talking about, we haven't figured out an answer yet, we're hoping to get one for you, is what do we do about the wall time? You've all heard about the wall time? Excuse me. My throat gets dry, I lose my voice. That's where they go. They transport somebody to the hospital and then they have to stay at the hospital, waiting for the hospital to admit the patient. And so they just sit there with the patient because they're still in their care. The longer they're at the hospital sitting on the wall, the less time they're available to respond to calls. And that's when you get into situations where it takes longer than necessary to get ambulances where they need to be. If you have specific questions, we have both chiefs here. They're more than happy to answer anything you have.
So David, the reason I wanted to discuss this is I know I have a problem in my district with Cedar Springs shores, Wilson Springs area, far reaches of the south end of Columbia County with response time and service availability. I don't know the answer to how we do this, but, um, it seems like to me if we have some EMTs on staff with the fire department, we can at least maybe respond to a call at these rural areas. And I, 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 I think Mr. Parnell has the same problem up in the deep creek area. And I would assume Everett's probably got some of the same problem down in the south end of his district by High Springs and all down there too. Because that's, seems like that's the hardest area to get to. I mean, you know, us commissioners, we don't, we don't have that luxury of like District, uh, Five and District Three of having a little compact district. Our districts are spread out way over, over all the county. And I'm going to tell you, I've got constituents that basically have been told there is no way, nobody to send to you right now. And Jeff, could you come up and talk about this a little bit? I, I'd like to hear what, what you have to say or how we can, what you're, what you're, I know you're over the ambulance, kind of oversees that, the, uh, fire department too.
To Lance.
What, what could we do here? And is this a grant that we might could utilize to help that?
And I, I will tell you, Rocky, I had in my dish, somebody, and I don't know if this is a mistake, I think he'll clear this up, but said, there's nobody to come get you.
Yeah.
And I, 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 I don't believe that. I don't believe that. That's something right there, you know?
Well, what, what they're talking about when they say nobody's coming to get you is, is all the ambulances are, are busy at that point in time. You know, now, uh, and, and there will be somebody to come get them. It's, it's just going to take a longer amount of time because there's none available at that time.
Let me, let me re, say what I said again. What they're saying is there's nobody right now in this second that can leave to go get you, but they're. What they're saying is, there's nobody right now in this second that can leave to go get you, but there may be something that clears up in five minutes. I think that's just a, that's a, that's a, that, they're just not communicating the right thing they're trying to communicate to folks.
But if we could get somebody there.
Well, yeah, folks are scared, they're, they're, I need.
If y'all will look at the, in the Fire Department, and since I've been in, in the Fire Department and all, and been the chief, uh, I've, we've worked on a lot of changes and, and since Chief Hill has come with me and all, we've, we've worked on some more changes and all. Uh, we've been able to implement since I started the ALS program, Advanced Life Support, where we, we run, uh, we started with the engine in, in Fort White in, in that area and the engine up north of town in Station Forty-two with Advanced Life Support, which means that basically that ambu, that fire truck, when it gets to you, it has paramedics, it has medication, it has cardiac monitors. It had, it can do to you everything that ambulance can do except tote you to the hospital. So when they get on scene, they can go ahead and start, uh, the medical care that's needed. They can start IVs, they can give the medications, they can do whatever it is that's needed. So when the ambulance does arrive, then they don't have to sit there and do all of that. They can load you and go, and it's a quicker scene time for the ambulance and quicker, quicker turnarounds and all for them. Uh, we've just been here recently able to, uh, implement that at, uh, Station Forty-three, which is Pine Mount Road also, and, uh, Mr. Holland's worst district. But, but where we're at by doing this and all that, when we're going to, we're, we're, I guess it's, it's say, we're, we're having to stay a little bit longer on scenes. We're going to more medical calls and stuff than we used to do. Because we're needed, you know, you, you're, you're saying that, nobody to respond, well, that's, that's ridiculous, we don't want that. We want somebody to respond. What, somebody needs to get there with Fire Department or if ambulance, whoever it may be, we need to get there. So we're responding to the calls, we're starting medical care and all. But that's taking that fire station out of service, you know, because we're having to wait an extended period of time for an ambulance to come, so that's taking that Fire Department, that station out of service because most of our stations are two-man stations. What I had, what the SAFER Grant would have done would be add a couple more personnel to some of these stations. So I'll give you, for instance, say in, in Mr. Uh, Mr. Everett's district over there. If his guys go out on a call, there's nobody left back there at the station, but there's still two trucks sitting there that could respond and stuff. If we were able to get more personnel and put three men at each of the station, there would still be somebody left back to, to take a truck or taking a, a vehicle and go ahead to the call and start whatever care, if it's medical care or if it's a fire, they, they can get there and they can allow the hose, they can get, get the process started while the next station or the ambulance, whatever it may be, can come. So just by adding another person to each, you know, a, a couple of stations that need, need a third person, then we're, we're increasing our ability to respond to calls and, and call volumes. Uh, you know, there was, there were years, uh, that, that through the COVID times and all that, it was very, very hard to get a fireman or, or a paramedic or anybody out on the road because everybody was so scared of the, the, the consequences of being out there around all of it. Since, I think it's November of last year, is Columbia County Fire Department has been fully staffed. That was the first, that was the first time.
I was wondering, do we even need, if we can't hire them by getting grant?
We, we, because of some of the stuff that has, has been done here, you know, the, 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 the push has got some of the raises and all, that has helped. We've changed, uh, our, uh, uh, the way we run shifts and all now, instead of a twenty-four forty-eight, we went to a forty-eight ninety-six, that has helped some retention. Now, we've done some internal things that didn't cost any money to, to things and, and little bit, little bit of change and all this helped. Plus, along with the, the stuff, the, the raises that y'all have been able to give, it's, it's helped. But there's a need in Columbia, I, I, y'all talk about all the time, the growth that's happening down there at, at Ellisville, the stuff that's coming in, the, the growth that's coming in at forty-seven, you talk about the thousands of people that come into town to these tournaments and stuff. That is, that is a big increase during those times and, and all that, the, the call volumes are going up. In the last three years, our call volume for Columbia County Fire Rescue has went up a little over twenty percent. So if, if you're, and we're, we're working on this year to, for it to go up even a little bit more than that. So you, you think about that, uh, because it's not like TV, you're, you're not just sitting around waiting, waiting in the station for a call to come. There's a lot of other things besides, uh, responding to a fire call or a medical call that, that Fire Department does. We have to test hoes on an annual basis, we have to do, uh, pump tests on all our trucks on a basis. We have to test hydrants in the Fort White and the, and Ellisville areas on an annual basis. We go to schools, we do programs at the different schools at, at different times to, for fire safety and, and stuff like that. So there's a whole lot that the Fire Department does that, that people don't realize. You know, we, we run to a lot of wrecks and all. There, the, a lot of wrecks doesn't need it, but you've got to think, if we're not there, if we can't respond and it's a wreck that has, needs extrication, even if EMS gets on scene, they can't do anything until we're there to cut the people out of the vehicle for them. So we get there, we help, we cut the people out, we help start the medical care, we help do all of that. It's, Columbia County's growing, uh, and it's growing tremendously and it's growing quick. Call volumes are going up for EMS, the, the ambulances, their call volumes are raising quickly too. So there's, at, at some point, we're going to have to grow. You know, e- everybody has, I guess, and, and I, I, please don't take this in a bad way, everybody has their priorities of things. Um, mine is public safety, I, I'm, my priority is life safety and fire and the safety of, of my people and, and the people of Columbia County. That's what y'all hired me to look after, yes, that's what y'all want me to, to try to make sure it is the best that it can be. So that's always going to be my priority. So that's what I, I set out to, to, is, is I'm building a budget, as I'm trying to change things in the department. That is what I'm looking for, that, that is my priority. Whatever we can do to make things better for the people of Columbia County, safer for the people of Columbia County, and anybody that comes through to these tournaments and, and travels these highways and stuff like that, so.
So, so Jeff, you saying if, if we approve this, and it sounds like this is something being done all the state, but if we approve something like this, you could hire those people immediately? We're not going to be sitting here with a grant, we're not able to hire them like it wasn't a year ago?
No, no, it's the, the, the pool of people to choose from and all out there has gone up. Now, I'll give you, for instance, you, you talk about the SAFER Grant, the City of Lake City did one a couple of years ago. And they're still under their, their grant process now, they, they did it and were able to hire some extra people. And they're, I think they're in their last, the third year of their grant right now, so they're still not, not having to pay as much for their people. Same thing we're wanting to do, I, I, I've talked with their chief and they're looking at trying to want to do the same thing again this year if, if possible. You know, it's, 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 it's the only way that, that I know of to help get more people without a, a tremendous cost right now. Because if you look, if you hired, if we, if we put in a grant for six people for two years, you've got six people to help respond to calls and do all that stuff, and you're, you're costing less than what it would have to just add to for those first years, first couple of years, you, you can have six people for a little less than the cost of two people. So in that third year, then you go up to having to pay sixty-five percent of what it would cost, so you're right at half for that third year. And then after that, uh, the grant does not say that you have to keep them. If there's some, if for some unknown reason, there was not a need, it, it, you don't, you don't have to keep the people. You could either, as someone left, not hire another person back or, you know, but I, I can't imagine that, that, the, the, uh, need wouldn't show itself, you know, as, as it happens.
David, I heard you say a while ago that this grant could be applied for every year.
This is an annual grant.
You, you have to hire people every year?
No, no, no. No, the grant application comes out every year. Uh, we've never applied for SAFER before because we've not been pushing to expand the Fire Department. Uh, but it, it's, it's, every year this cycle comes up. I can't guarantee it'll come up next year, but it's been coming up every year as long as I can remember.
Well, I, I can tell you that as, as the population grows in Columbia County, you're gonna have more calls, I just heard Jeff say a while ago, there's twenty-seven more calls that he's answering now than just last year?
Then in the last three, yeah.
Last three.
They, they just.
When's the last time we added any new personnel to the Fire Department, or we?
Technically, the last personnel we added was under the opioid money and was the paramedicine.
Oh, one person?
I was one person.
One person. And how many years has that been?
So the opioid was last year.
That was last year, but before that point, uh, we had not expanded the Fire Department since a little before twenty sixteen, twenty, uh, twenty fifteen or twenty fourteen in that range.
But a lot of that, Jeff, was it not because of staffing availability, correct? Because I mean, everybody was using us as a, uh, distribution center, correct?
And, and we were, and, and, and that's why I say with, with some of the help, this, some of the changes that we've made and with the, the raises that, that y'all have been able to give in the last couple of years, it's brought us up to a point where we can compete somewhat now. Uh, yeah, there were, there were a number of years that, that people would get hired on with us within a year or so, going to Gainesville, going to, uh, Jacksonville, going, I mean, we were a training ground for a stepping stone. And, and we will still be to an extent, because realistically, we, we are, we're not going to be able to compete with Jacksonville and, and money-wise and, and stuff like that, it's just not real. But with what we have now, we're getting more local people that want to stay here. You know, that, that's our biggest thing because before we were, local people were, even local people were coming, getting trained and, and they were leaving. But now we're having more and more local people that actually want to stay with us and make a career out of working here in Columbia County.
And we want local people.
Yeah, and we do.
People that know the town.
People that have, that are invested in our community, that's what we want. And, and we're able to work with, uh, the college and all out here. We're, we're, we're going to do, also I know the city did, and, and we're looking to try to do too, to where if we get somebody trained, hired on, trained, we can put them through the extra EMT or put them through the paramedic or whatever it needs to be. I mean, they'll have to guarantee that they'll stay with us a, a certain amount of time, but we can do that so that we can, you know, increase the knowledge and, and the, and, and what it takes for, for to have Columbia County to be a, a better. You know, we, we want to, we want to do whatever it takes and, and that's what we're after.
So, let me, let me ask, let me ask one question.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. Population is our problem, right?
Population is growing.
Okay, can we get a count of population growth from five years back till now? That way we'll tell what we need for the Fire Department or the Police Department, whatever, whatever it may be.
Well, now, see, along, along with the population that's actually living in the county, you, you got to.
Yeah, you got a lot of people out of county.
Well, you, you've got to look at, at the, the, all of the tournaments and stuff to have, the people coming into the county that, and the people staying in the hotels and the people that come into the racetracks and stuff. So it's not only county residents that we have to deal with, we have to deal with everybody that comes through Columbia County.
You got two major interstates.
Two major interstates through here, that, that's getting busier and busy.
So there again, and that's just the population all over it. Any country is going up, so it's.
So we need to prepare a report that not only shows you the census demographics and where the population's growing, it also needs to include building permits, where the pop, where the buildings are growing, it needs to include TDC information, from all the TDCs doing, it needs to include economic development information. So you can get a good, solid picture of what's happening to this county as we move forward. But it needs to be comprehensive from all the different departments that can provide you that data.
It, it does, but looking at, at where, where our responses all are now, we're, we're glow, we're growing more in, like you said, in, in the Columbia City area, we're growing a lot of response. And, and in your area, we're growing, and, and north of town. I mean, our response is up there, but that, that's what I'm saying is, is, is right now, if I had, were able to put on six people, which is, is just two people per day, I would probably add one to the north end of the county and I would add one to the, to the Ellisville area because that would help, Ellisville area would help with the responses over there to add that person. Plus, that would always, that would help with the Fort White and all area, so. And then up north of town, if our station, the only station we have up there, you know, north of, north of ten is busy, then that, it, that adds that third person, so that adds response to your area also.
So the wall time y'all talk about at the hospital, that's got to do with population also?
Yeah, well, that's, that's got to do with number of people going to the hospitals.
Yeah, but I mean, you've got more people going to the hospital, so you got, you have more people that need ambulance services and all that kind of stuff. So you're looking at the ambulance people may not be holding their own, but at least they're got more people coming in this county that they have to take care of. So how are you going to justify all the kind of stuff that you're doing with ambulance services?
The third thing is what we've been looking at, what we're trying to address, is how do we keep the ambulances on the road responding rather than being tied up? Whether it's on scene time, when it comes to wall time, that's something we're going to have to address with the hospital. And we have some ideas, they're not far enough to present it, but we're going to have to meet with HCA and say, something's got to give. Because the longer they hold them up at the amb, at the hospital, waiting for them to admit the patient, that means they're not on the road answering calls.
Correct.
Chairman, if you will. So I have spoken at the Lake Shore Hospital Authority meeting and, uh, and they have showed that they're, that they're would like, or willingness to work with the county to help provide some of the funding for uh, ambulance service and some of this through Lake Shore Hospital Authority. And they're supposed to be looking at that in their budget this year. So hopefully we can help fund this project with money, some of the money from Lake Shore Hospital Authority. And I know our, we got a lot of stuff on our plate, but one thing we have to do is this board, is make sure we're providing emergency medical care to our.
I'm gonna tell you, that's, that's the worst thing you'll ever go through. Calling thinking your family's dying and that, and it's taking a long time, that's not good.
And we want to address that.
And the, uh, if I may, board, the, the SAFER Grant, as Jeff spoke, is a very unique way to get a head start. The problems I've had with it in the past is staff has never brought a plan together, how you're going to staff it after the fact. Now, going forward, if we can establish that, I mean, I think we got two more than reputable people right here and about to come up with a great plan. Uh, I'm a hundred percent for that because we're going to be faced with it right here in a couple of weeks at budget time. Issues that we didn't face three, four years ago, that we're going to fund this budget, whether you like it or not. I mean, the Sheriff's Office, we all know what's happening there. It's not because you got a new sheriff in town or nothing like this, we're in competition with the state of Florida on hiring, uh, law enforcement officers. Jeff's, Jeff's in competition with Gainesville, I, I, I know numerous people that left that department to go to Gainesville, everybody can make a thirty-minute drive. But the point is, we all realize also there's enough money here. So legislatively on my part, next year, you know, uh, uh, our representatives are going to be quite busy because, you know, they're, they're jumping ship to go to Department Ag right now like you ain't never seen.
And it's not just the fire and public safety, it affects Kevin's department.
I agree, I agree.
He loses people because he can't.
Totally realize that, but.
Me and Kevin were talking about that today.
But you as a manager, it's your responsibility to get this thing rolling now. It's not to wait until the budget's, you know, we're, we're two years into this thing, me and Jeff, uh, and, uh, where did you write, Josh, yeah, Josh had a discussion. You know, the City of Lake City is sitting right here in the middle, I mean, with them walking distance of here even for me. And, uh, you know, they don't have an ALS, but they're working towards it. And Jeff said, but you're putting that third one on right now, right, Jeff? Yeah. Okay, so, so and, and of course, uh, you know, the ambulance service here in town, you know, they have problem hiring EMTs and medics and what have you, as well as Jeff will experience too, you know, but all that comes with a higher demand of dollars. And, and that's what you got to start working for today and budgeting today. Because, and this, this thing at the wall time, you call it, uh, that should have been addressed ten years ago. And, uh, we, we get incentives and what have you, but we don't get nothing in return. Yes, sir.
Chairman, the only thing, what concerns me as I'm reading it, the application to apply for this grant, excuse me, is July twenty-fifth.
That's this cycle, yes.
Mm-hmm. So that's, that's, that's the deadline, we, so we, if we're going to do this this year, we've got to make a decision at this meeting or the next meeting to apply, so, you know. I would, I would ask that David and Jeff and Lance, or whoever needs to be involved in this, bring us something back at the next meeting.
Absolutely.
To look at. Because I for one, am for putting some of these people on to, because here's the thing, if they can get there, they can stabilize that patient, do whatever needs to be done. And when the ambulance gets there, they're ready to load it up and go, you know what I'm saying? So, oh, that, that would save a lot of time right there on scene time. And, uh, as far as the wall time at hospitals, we have to address that, but we can't do anything about that right now, we can do something about this.
Correct.
You know, and, and I'm gonna tell you, I don't know, five or six, seven, eight years, I don't remember when it was, I had an issue with a, with a, with a person that got hurt. I had an issue with a with a person that got hurt in an accident. And there is no better feeling when them firemen jump out of that truck and it takes another fifteen minutes for the ambulance to get there and those firemen are there taking care of you. It's a big deal. And until somebody's gone through that, they really don't know what it's like. I hope people will think about that because it's a, it's a big deal.
It is.
But you know, not to bombard, you know, our fire department and our leadership there to, I mean, the twenty percent that Jeff alluding to, that that's a number. And I, you know, I've got a rule of thumb, you can't argue the numbers. Get the numbers together, the numbers established, that's what you get, you know, rather than, and and don't get me wrong, I realize the economic uh, growth and this, that, and the other, we all get that, that's that is an integral part of it. But at the end of the day, that response, that call coming from E M S is what drives his bottom line. As I say, you know, E M S or contractors, same way, fire, you know, everybody. And, you know, we we've been here, everybody's sit on the, you know, we've heard sheriff, the sheriff come up and say, you know, well, we got X amount of more calls. We get that, but we've got to have a plan because you cannot you cannot continue to ignore situations such as this and continue to stack your your capital projects list over, we're over a hundred million right now, you know, so there's got to be a priority here. It's got to be established and.
Well, I would just add.
I'd say it needs to be on the next agenda.
Decision, which has got to be one of our problems.
It needs to be on the next agenda, really, in my opinion.
Let me see. I don't know if Everett was here, but when we decided to make the change or the the adjustment, the reason why they shut eighteen down and Marshaun Road, I think, right?
Yeah, Marshaun Road.
And then the numbers, again, we went by the numbers, there was nobody getting calls, nobody. And, you know, but the but the, but the, with that being said, you know, that was a decision that the board made at that time. But I guarantee you, them numbers ain't the same today as they were then.
No, no. When you're talking about shutting them down or backing them back down to volunteer departments, you're you're correct.
Yeah.
We needed, we were, we had a lot higher call volume in Columbia City than we did at those two stations at that point in time. And we needed people in Columbia City and we did not have the 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 money or or whatever to to add personnel alone. So we had to make some adjustments in where our personnel are. But the populate, like you said, the the call volumes are increasing everywhere. Call volumes are increasing back north of town, so it's 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 needed there, it's shown that the the response is needed and and it is shown to be there. Same thing out with with, you know, out there in in Ellisville area. It is showing that the call volumes are increasing, it's it's needed now in those areas. And it's only going to grow all countywide, everything is growing countywide, it's not going to go backwards, no.
Hey, let me ask you.
Definitely increased out in the town for sure, I see it every day.
Well, just from my own mind and in my mind and and the way law enforcement works and the way your job works, when they're closer to the hospital, do you tend to have just as many calls where people are five minute drive from the hospital or do you mostly have calls? I I'm just wondering if there's a higher call volume, like my district, I mean, the hospitals, Tim and I's district are right there with the hospital. Do people, do some people just take it upon themselves or that are the volumes as high in in inside close to the hospital or?
They're pretty close to the same, a lot of people, you hate to say it, but a lot of people take advantage of of the E M S system and all because hospitals are busy. We only have one hospital here, one emergency room, it it stays pretty busy. They think that if they can call an ambulance to get to them to take them to the hospital, they won't have to sit out there in the in the lobby away. So they they'll do that, so.
Chairman, I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
So Jeff, how many calls do you respond to at the fire department that you can save the ambulance even having to come to them? I mean, if y'all.
So, so I I'm sorry, I can't give you a number, but there is, there's calls that we do respond to. Some of the wrecks and all, if we respond there and get on scene and they're not needed, we can cancel them so they don't have to come. Some of the, we get a lot of what you hate, sound like a cliche, but it's I I fall in and can't get up calls, stuff like that, if we we have the medics and all, we can get there, we and we can evaluate the person to make sure they didn't hurt something if it's an older person or 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 someone that has issues so that we can cancel to cancel them then at that point and and they can go on back instead of having to come and and do it. So there's, there's a number of calls as we get progress more and more with our A L S that we can, we can take care of on our own and and not have to have E M S to respond and.
So you can lighten the load for E M S in a major way.
Yes.
So under the grant, how many people can you hire?
It is many as you apply for. Uh, now the grants, as many as you can find. What what we, what I had had hoped when I first approached David about it was I was hoping to do on this cycle, six people total. And because I I do realize that it, like Commissioner Murphy said, afterwards, after three years, they've still got to be funded. You know, the the county's got to be able to fund them at some point somewhere.
Right off the bat, yeah.
Yeah, well, yeah, right off the bat. So one firefighter in Columbia County, that salary and all the benefits, the workers comp, the retirement, the insurances, all that costs just a little over eighty thousand dollars. So so six.
About eighty thousand a year, think so?
Yeah.
If you funded a hundred percent of it.
Yeah, six. If if you funded six hours, that's four hundred and eighty thousand a year, you're correct. But it, for the first two years, you would only be paying a hundred and twenty thousand for six people. I mean, that's, that's, that's less than two people you would be paying for and you would actually have six on board. So there there is a good bit of savings, there there's a lot of savings and I agree that.
If you get six people for three years or six years. For how much? Three people being.
So it's seventy-five percent for the first two years and sixty-five percent for the third.
Bring all that back to me.
Yeah, yeah, I I and I will, I will.
And that kind of shows you that when you do have to start funding them, you're really not for a couple of years because you've already, you've you've gained so much money.
You've you've gained some out of it.
But my question was.
Commissioner Murphy always says you've got to be prepared.
Got to be funded, you got to fund it.
You do.
You can apply for this grant each year, but you can't, you have to add.
You have to, you can't do it to to pay for existing personnel, it has to be to add.
So it's it's a recurring expense after that.
Jeff, just clarification, if I may, these positions are going to be firefighter E M Ts, correct?
Yes, we we have it to, we have it to where within the first year of being hired with Columbia County, you have to have your E M T also.
Okay, so now that, does that fall within the parameters of the the this grant?
Yes, yes.
Okay, so they allow us to hire firefighter, then make him an E M T.
Right, well, because we, the dollar amount that we would put in for the grant would incorporate that into it. So we have to put in the dollar amounts, it is, different places have different dollar amounts that that they put in because of what it costs. So we would, we would be looking for firefighter E M Ts, so that's the dollar amount that we would put in for the grant system. Yeah, and like I said, another thing that we're, we try to offer or or want to offer here that we've, David and I have been working on a good bit is is even once they get hired with us and get off probation, if they want to stay and they're guaranteeing us to stay a number of years, then we will try to help fund them going through the paramedic program. Help as an incentive to go through the program and all, and then then you have your guaranteed spot for so many years.
Can we contract with somebody like that, can we put them under that type of?
Yes, yeah, the other counties around us already have those and and I've worked with with Carrie in H R a little bit and she's, she's come up with a couple of the contracts and we've come up with a couple of the contracts from surrounding counties. And even the the city of Lake City has one that they are already doing. So it's it's not, you know, invent a new thing, it's just we're, we're trying to keep progressing as we go along.
It's like Robbie said a while ago, I've listened to some of these stories, I've talked with these people and you know, you can't help but put yourself in their situation and think, my God, I'd be, I'd be the same way, you know.
A few minutes seems like hours when you're waiting there for somebody to get to you, so.
So so you're going, David, can we have this on the next meeting and let Jeff and Lance maybe bring us a proposal to look at? And and that way we can lay out our total cost and by then you should have time to have have a chance to do what you need to do also as far as look at it.
I'll pull the demographic data, the other data. Say you want it on the next meeting, it'll be on the next meeting.
Chairman, are you okay with that?
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely.
But still say the growth has got a lot to do with what we're talking about.
It does, it does.
I don't know if anybody even knows how many people is in this county, I don't think.
I I'll tell you the truth, growth has everything to do with everything we do, everything we do, roads, everything we do.
It does.
Well, I mean, it's like traffic on dirt roads, I have dirt roads you could grade every week, you know, just causing traffic on them, just everything's increasing, you know.
Go on outside of the interstate and come back and see what happens.
I'd give y'all a bunch more money if you can get some speed enforcement, can you park them things?
That's a sheriff issue.
Do y'all have the issues with the speeding that I?
I have terrible on dirt roads. And I'm going to tell you something we're going to have to address before it's over with is side by sides and four wheelers on these dirt roads. I mean, I don't know how you address it or what you do with it, guys, but I'm just telling you that's a lot of our problem, dirt roads.
Especially in your area.
Especially in my area.
I didn't mind do.
Yeah, they just think it get worse because some are just broke to them.
They want to sit in the middle of the intersection and dig.
I like in front of your old lot, I like to get hit on there Monday.
I'm telling you, it's a, it's a problem.
I I appreciate y'all listening and if y'all have any more questions, please let me know.
Thank you, buddy. So the next item or the last item is the Edward Byrne Memorial Grant. We do this every year. We're involved because the grant will only give us the money, we, it's a straight pass through to the sheriff and a straight pass through to the city. We're asking you to approve the chair to execute the fifty percent letter or fifty-one percent letter and also sign the certificate of participation so they can get those funds.
I move, we approve the chair to execute the fifty-one percent letter and it's certificate of participation. Second.
Got a motion in the second, any other discussion? Oh, in favor say aye.
Thank you very much.
Okay, at this time, any I'm not signing all this. At this time, we have anybody, any public comments, please? Seeing none, staff comments?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chair. I feel obligated to inform the board, next year, twenty twenty-six, your solid waste contract is up for renewal. There's been some conversation as it relates to negotiating that versus going out to bid. And of course, picking up garbage is a huge issue in this county. In my opinion, I conversed with Joel about this, you recently adopted a policy that gives parameters of negotiation if you choose, if the vendor chooses not, go back to bid. And if you guys remember that, if we're happy with the service, they're happy with the service, there are parameters that was adopted via the policy. So simply put, I advised the solid waste provider the other day, guys, we have a policy, okay? If you choose to stay within that policy, because we are happy with the service, I think everybody will agree with that. But in my opinion, if you alter the process with them, you're going to spin out of control with all of your other vendors, if that makes any sense. Now, Joel informed me that the board really can do however they want to do with it, right? But in my opinion, I know with all of our other vendors, you take, you just approved the annual concrete contract. That vendor said, I cannot live within the adjustments provided by that policy. So that vendor rolled the dice and was fortunate, he got his contract back with a significant increase, okay? So he followed the process, he rolled the dice. So I just wanted to go ahead and bring this up as it's getting a little closer. In my opinion, if you do not follow the same process with that particular vendor, I think we're sending a real awkward message to all of our.
Absolutely, that's the reason why we established that previous policy.
And and commissioners, if you'll remember when we produced the, introduced the policy to you and talked about it, the way it's structured, it incentivizes our good contractors to find a way to re-up at or below three percent. So we're serving the public interest by trying to get them to re-up under that three percent threshold. And then they can still come back at that under five percent threshold, you just need, you know, another step of authorization. The reality of the situation is for a contract like that, they've already come in and asked for increases in excess of five percent that you that you've said no to. So, you know, I I I would agree with Kevin to the extent, is it, is it legal to deviate from policy? Sure, it's your policy, you can make that decision to deviate from policy. But I think the policy was sound, it is fairly new and from everything I'm hearing, Kevin, Kevin, correct me wrong, it's apparently working very well.
It is.
It's apparently working very well in terms of purchasing is not having to get involved in more contracts than they need to. We're re-upping people at good competitive prices and we're satisfied with the services we're receiving. So we understand you're going to get those calls, we understand you're going to get leaned on, but from the staff level up to you guys, we wanted to encourage you to hold firm on the policy and and let it play itself out.
And it also gives you a certain amount of control over what your costs are going to be moving forward. Whereas if you go out to bid and if you choose to go out to bid, these costs could vary drastically.
Chair, but I have one thing I would like to ask the board also, so I got a call from the town, one of the council members of Fort White. You know that they received a fifty thousand dollar grant for Johnny May Park on Wilson Springs Road. I've asked Clint to give me a price on what it would cost to put a couple loads of clay on that ball field there. And he's given me a price of thirty-six hundred dollars for the clay and we need some used bases, he said a hundred dollars for the used bases. I would like for the board to give me permission to use some of my paving money to buy that material for that park. Thirty-seven hundred bucks, very, very small amount, but you know, we have the issue right now with practice fields and stuff with some of the ball, ball teams and they could use that field for a practice, practice field, but it does need a little bit of work on it. And we have done this in the past, according to Clint, we've worked on this field a few times over the over the last year, few years, so.
Clint, this is a project that you're good with, I guess, I mean, Safeway, you can handle it? I'm glad Rocky brought this up because I just forgot about something. You know, we did the Kevin's department went down to the school when the elementary school was brought online and we put some signs in their area and we've never, I've never followed up, we did about going to get them goalposts and putting them over there on the practice fields. You know, for the football season, I guess what I'm saying, the youth league football, Fort White Football League could be starting here pretty quick, so I ain't trying to load you down, Clint, so we can probably get Kevin to work on Saturday.
Well, and I just had, this is a, this is a public park.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Owned by the town, it's not private property, it's a public park.
Yeah.
Owned by the town of Fort White.
Do you remember that that offer? Do you remember right there by the fort in Fort White, the old school, there's, there's two old goalposts there and one of that ties feller asked if we could get it moved over there and then we put a deal together with the school board to do some signs.
Joel, do we need to do that in a motion?
No, sir, I don't think you do, it's within David's spending, or I think it's important that you've apprised the board that you'd like to do that, but it's thirty-six hundred dollars, I don't think you can motion.
Okay.
So we're going to, the right of way mowing on the county roads, is that, is that contract coming up too? Is it butt season or is that another time or?
Yes, yeah.
Right, right away, I'm sorry, right away, alongside, along the road mowing?
Yeah, yes, sir, I don't recall exactly when, but I have spoken with the contractor recently and he is willing to negotiate versus going out to bid if we so choose to do that.
Yeah, we need to negotiate and he's, my opinion needs to tighten up. It's, the those, I I want to see kids standing in bushes taller than they are, waiting for a school bus, that's a problem.
I'm going to tell you, been here three years ago, you'd be blessed. Well, I can tell you, I don't know if it's because we didn't have it trained this year, I don't know. But you know, if you'll pay attention to your roads, and this is really strange, and I wondered why Lake Jeffrey Road, Curly Road and and what's the road that connects ninety from from Nash and all right there? You want to talk about the one that goes, they were all this high.
Right.
All your seeds off trucks. You got seed mill close by, if you got a farm mill close by, all that rye and seeds flying. It was amazing, I I looked at it the other day, that it was deer head high on Lake Jeffrey and everywhere else is that high. It's it's weird that those, we ought to have some kind of a impact.
So Kevin, when did they start the mowing for this year? It started already here.
Yeah. Yep, Commissioner, Mr. Chair, Commissioner Parnell, and I'm going to get my numbers a little wrong. Yep, the, Mr. Chair, Commissioner Parnell, and I'm gonna get my numbers a little wrong. I remember back when we had a rural mowing contract and that was it. We've got a rural mowing contract, we have two separate independent urban contracts. We've got enough zero turn lawnmowers at your hundred to put Michael's out of business. We 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 cannot get this mowing, the the expectations of mowing is really as much as you want to spend on it, okay? We do have penalties built within our contract, especially on the rural side of things, the one you referred to. And as of right now, that contractor is in within compliance of the current contract. I said that to say this, if you want to up the ante, you will obviously, you know, you've got your rotations, you've got your litter pickup, you've got your cycles. But simply put, and I agree with you, we, I don't think you can ever do enough. But the current contractor is in compliance with his contract as set forth today, okay? So through the years, and Commissioner Murphy, you've been around a long time now. If I recall right, we had terminated a couple roadside mowers in your tenure, Commissioner Murphy?
Yep.
So roadside mowing has always been an issue as long as I can remember, right? The current times we're at today is the best we've been in in probably a decade. Not saying it's perfect. But if you want to amend your cycles and et cetera, things like that. And there's always this other thought process just to educate you about wildflowers, okay? So in the spring of the year, you get some wildflowers. Some take exception to mowing wildflowers, right? So then once you skip that cycle, like mowing areas of wildflowers, it's kinda like the deal, you never get caught back up, right? So roadside mowing has always been controversial. We spend millions of dollars literally mowing grass every year. And um I just don't know where that starts and ends.
Uh, so we need to revisit the contract then?
Well, if if the expect, if the expectations that you are having right now are not being met, simply put, you need to add cycles and things of that nature. Because the contractor is in compliance of his current contract.
Clint, what's the cycle, forty five days? I think you're still over that, right, Clint? Okay. Did you hear that, Mr. Parnell?
I'm sorry, say it again, I'm sorry.
Yeah, Clint, I'm sorry. Me and Clint have been down some crazy roads on this thing.
Yeah, I I mean, it's.
But this is a good educational tool right here for sure.
Commissioner Parnell, um, the concerns in your district, Commissioner Williams used to stand up here and throw his hat down and complain about it every year. The the contract starts in the south end of the county and goes to the north. So by the time the contractor gets up there, obviously your grass is a lot higher than what it's been in all these other districts. In years past, we tried starting at the north and working south, that didn't work at all. We even tried busting it up in two quadrants, putting tractors on the north end and tractors on the south end. Kevin, correct me if I'm wrong, the contract went up fifty three percent that year just for the dollar amount, separating tractors, separating crews, separating the whole nine yards. This board chose, we used to have five mowing cycles, this board showed, not this board, but a board several years ago to reduce that back to four cycles per year. Um, those cycles were thirty eight working days long. But we have added so many miles, all these dirt to pave conversions we talk about from the old wires and all the way through, we've added so many miles of roadway to this mowing contract, I'm fixing to bump it to forty working days in order for him to complete that. We've tried multiple angles over the past five years to try to adjust on where we start, how many tractors, how many crews. And the current contractor is on on cycle with what he's supposed to do in his current contract. If we adjust that contract, it's gonna go up significantly.
Since since I've been here, I will say I have had maybe two complaints this whole year now, last year? Or was it last, no, year before last, year before last, hundreds of complaints. And and I can see it in my own road, I mean, it's terrible. But we had a lot of rain, you know, so.
Well, rain plays a big factor in it, and of course, like this year right now, everybody's been complaining about how hot it is in May. You know, growing hay, I mean, you get that heat, humidity and and those warm nights versus in cooler nights, the grass is gonna grow like wildfire. The only way I understand your issues, because like I said, I've been dealing with it for the last twenty five years. Um, the only way to correct that is to have additional cycles or additional tractors on the road, which means that contract goes through the roof.
So it works south of the county to north, but doesn't work north going south?
Yeah.
How does that, why is that?
We tried it for two years um with the last contractor. And it has something to do, it has a lot to do with just your soil types. Um, on your north end up there, when we start getting the rain and everything, because y'all hold a lot more moisture and all up there, that grass grows twice as fast as it does down there. So even when we started on the north end working south, by the time the tractors got back, the same complaint, grass was that tall, you know, it didn't matter which end we started, you still had that same growth pattern.
I'm gonna go ahead and tell you, I just found out that we start something in the south end of county before we do any rest of county, I think that's the only thing that we do first at the south end of county.
Well, and and I'll tell you something else too, and people, you think your constituents don't have this marked on the calendar? We have seen it firsthand, when we made that swap that year, we had more complaints on mowing because people actually have it written down. Third week of July, that tractor mows my roadway and he wasn't here. Y'all would not believe the call volume difference we got when we made that rotational switch.
I I've accused them there on the country club road, Kevin, uh when they mow, they're spreading some kind of high potency or, because it over, they've hit, they've hit, they've mowed that road already, but it's already looks like jungle.
I bet north of town too, if you start that mowing, it's like one of y'all started March or something.
We start April first.
And I guarantee it's wet a lot, a lot of times up there, because you got March and April to get so wet, and that's another thing.
But and you've got, again, because of the soil types and everything, you've got a total total range of diversity on what you're growing. You know, when you start getting out there on Nash Road, basically that's kind of a transition zone, Nash Road, Brown Road, all the working north, Lake Jeffrey and all that, you've got a ton of Johnson grass and your wild rise and all that stuff that you don't have in that dry sandy soil in the south end of the county. So it tremendous difference in your growth patterns on on what you're mowing.
That's where all my complaints are, Nash, Lake Jeffrey, the road coming off Nash, right, all of it, it starts there, I don't have any complaints.
Are they still dodging wildflowers right now?
No, they, we just started the second cycle uh last Thursday. Second cycle, we mow everything clean. Uh, first cycle's the only time we dodge wildflowers and it's gotta be an area ten by ten or bigger. And there's only two types that we dodge, that's coriopsis and the phlox. Anything else, and the little toad flax and all them little white flowers that everybody calls wildflowers, we mow them.
I wanna ask a question, not not to, not to.
Real, real quick, Mr. Phillips?
Not not to Clint, but I I need to go back to this three percent we used to talk about of increase in the people that work for the county. Does the garbage people get an increase every time a house hole comes online?
No, sir.
So you're looking at a lot more, like I said, people moving in here. The garbage people is ending up picking up way the heck more garbage. I'm I'm just saying, you're you're wanting them to take three percent increase without going out to bid, is that what you're saying?
No, if if they can't do it for three percent, then we just go to bid. Like it's, it's, it, they may not be able to.
Yeah.
We're not saying you have to take three percent, we're saying if you want to avoid a bid, do three percent.
Okay.
They might need twelve percent, they might need eighteen percent, I mean, we we all understand, everything's more expensive.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So let me ask you a question, Joe. If they want more than five percent, can we approve that without going to bid?
It's y'all's policy, right, and it's y'all's contracts, right? So the whole thing where we have to rebid everything five years, that was just y'all's policy.
Because I honestly believe if we go to bid, it's gonna be a lot more than what we.
So so, yeah, it's not that we can't negotiate, right? It's not that we can't negotiate, but it's y'all's policy. And I think what Kevin's saying is if you open the door to that sort of ad hoc, you know, we'll do it here, we'll do it there, I would agree, you've got uh uh solid waste and uh EMS services, those are your big dog contracts, right? Those are really, really tough to negotiate, those are thick contracts, there's a lot involved. So I mean, if you're gonna make an exception, it's a candidate. I think though, if you talk about that three, five, and then more than five, probably let's go through that process first. And if we find something through those negotiations, that something, maybe let it happen from the staff level up to you guys versus from you guys down to the staff level, if that makes sense. Like, if we see an opportunity to avoid a significant increase, because it could be. It could be twelve percent, it could be eighteen percent, we, but if we see an opportunity to negotiate with the contractor, because again, I think from the bottom up, everybody's very happy with the waste program.
But we know that the next bid, closest bid to the one we got last time was two million dollars.
Yeah, yeah, so I mean, we we understand the dynamics that are at play here, we just wanna make sure that you guys understand you did adopt that policy. It's our recommendation to you that you sort of stand on that policy, if there needs to be a variation, maybe let that emanate from the staff level up to you guys.
And I like the policy because it kinda gives contractors a little, you know.
Yeah, well, I I understand that as far as the guys that don't have any thing to do with people moving in here. I mean, I know they do, but they don't like the EMS and the garbage people, because the garbage people picks up, they end up telling how many more garbage cans they gotta start to pick up in a, in a period of time, and that's why I want to know, that's why I wanna know how many people moved in here in the last five years.
Kevin, if I'm, if I'm not mistaken, uh, Mr. Kirby, weren't we faced with this last year?
Right.
They they, we, there was uh, there was a, hold on just a second, we not getting, I just wanna make sure everybody here understands, hears this. Because I think last year we were faced with, uh, we're fixing to have to go up, don't hold me to the number, fifteen percent. And we said, well, if that's so, okay, we're gonna send that to bid, then all of a sudden fifteen percent disappeared.
Yes, sir, that is correct, uh, Mr. Chair, just for clarity purposes, when I'm dealing with all these vendors on a daily basis, I just need clear understanding, you know, I'm of the opinion, you guys adopted a policy. And and let's go back in time just one second, we had a policy that said, no matter what, no matter if everybody was tickled to death and we didn't, the vendor did not need a raise. Three years for blue collar services, five years for white collar services, that was your policy, no matter what you went to bid. What really caught my attention was based on that policy, we were putting, to go to Commissioner Ford's point, we were putting things out to bid and nobody was had a problem on our side or their side. We saw thirty, thirty five percent increases. So I said, board, let's get rid of this policy. If we're happy and they're happy, let's set some parameters that we can negotiate if they want to stay on board without going to bid. Where I have a challenge is how do you pick which vendor you enforce the policy versus open negotiation? I'm looking at a vendor right there that just rolled the bones and could have very well lost his contract, he did not have that opportunity. Okay, so he opted to go out to bid. So that's the only reason I brought it up, it is your one of two significant, we've got several significant contracts, the roadside mowing, for example, right? If y'all recall, there was like a million dollars left on the table between the two vendors last time, eight or nine hundred thousand dollars. And the guys, the guys, they've done a real good job thus far. And if we do amend or or, you know, right now, he's telling me he can negotiate with us and stay on board with us, right? If 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 we do this, in my opinion, with a solid waste provider, I could logically see him saying, well, why don't you have more open interpretation with me? That's the challenge I've got with it.
A solid waste reached out to y'all, is that?
Yes, sir.
And this is next year, right?
Yeah, there's contracts due next year, but for, Mr. Chair, if I may, you know, with all the trucks and the personnel, I understand why they don't wanna wait to drop dead moment, that's a big deal, right? So, you know, if they're not gonna serve Clemmie County anymore, I I on our side too. You know, we we all have learned during hurricanes and whatnot, you miss a trash pickup, that's a hot mess, right? So it's a very important contract, but I would appreciate uh y'all considering what we're talking about over the next couple of weeks and maybe have a good frank discussion about it, because right now I've got my marching orders. And if it changes from that, that so be it, I just do wanna hinder caution, I don't know, I don't know what to do with each individual vendor after that, that's what I'm gonna say.
Well, the uh just as recent as the ambulance, uh, the EMS uh contract, you see what kind of situation it almost led to right there at the end on the transition. You know, they were, they were bailing real quick, and of course, uh you know, I think we did what was necessary and had a front money up front, this, that and another, had to keep the ball rolling, so to speak, so. Hundred percent, I I think it's a just, you know, that's business, that's just part of business.
That's all I have, Chair.
Okay, any other, Mr. Parnell, you got any comments?
No, I'm good, it's a good meeting, guys.
Robbie? We're not, huh?
Phillips?
We're going on down the road.
Uh, I got one, uh, if I may, uh, Jennifer, come forward for a second, I wanna ask you something here. David shared with us on the fifteenth, myself and Kevin, on a uh just wanted clarification, and I know the board, I was asked, you know, why is this coming off, I don't know, but on the fifteenth, on the budget amendment on the NFIP uh retention pond incentive, explain it to me.
So when they first went out to bid and procured the the piping and the the materials needed for the construction pond um or for the construction of the stormwater pond, the pricing of the piping that goes underneath the rail, which eventually will be conveyed to the county, so it will be county infrastructure, it's part of the stormwater system that drains into that regional stormwater pond. Um, the pricing of that went up, so they had asked, um, the the difference of that was seventy thousand. Um, so that's just the the cost of that piping.
Was this something that the advisory board advised to?
Um, it wasn't taken to the advisory board at the time, uh, we were gonna use the infrastructure improvement money that is allocated in the economic development button, um, budget to cover that, since it was um only the seventy thousand, and again, it's it's infrastructure that'll belong to the the county at some point. Happy to take it to uh the board if you'd like first. Um, the the rail company has has, you know, offered to pay upfront if we needed to to go ahead and take care of that so we could keep the the construction moving. So it it hasn't delayed the project, um, because the rail has stepped up and said they'll they'll cover it for now, but in their perception, it's county-owned infrastructure, so they feel that the county should pay it.
We own what?
It, the the stormwater system. So the the pond, the infrastructure.
We will maintain it.
We will own it and maintain it.
Own it and maintain it. So who designed it?
Um, initially, it was designed by Moore Bass when Avro Liquids contractor um went in and and um started designing their site. They made some changes to make it a little more economically efficient for them. Um, that went through approval, through the site plan process, through the county, everybody saw what that was. There were some changes that needed to be made. So the economic development agreement that we approved, that that this board approved um covered the the difference in the cost between what the the county required and what the um company had proposed for the the pond. So the economic development agreement that we have covers the difference in that cost, this would fall underneath that.
But it's it's my understanding that the design was not taken in compensation that for us to get in to maintain this pond, correct? Or is that incorrect?
I I don't know the answer to that.
Well, we just, I didn't have no backup material to to do this and been looking for it for a couple of weeks and just didn't have it, so I figured, I seen you in the crowd, I figured, go to the the lady in charge. I appreciate it.
Yeah.
All right.
Goodbye.
I'm good.
Goodbye.
Motion to adjourn.